So, welcome everyone to this study session. Appreciate all of our staff and guests who are here today to help us with it. We are going to start today in our, with item 4.0, 4.1, with our legislative wrap-up. And I will turn it first to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Directors. Good evening. Tonight, we've asked our Legislative Government Affairs Liaison, Mr. Charles Brown, representing Cascade Government Affairs, to give us a high-level overview of the work that we were able to navigate this legislative session as both under your legislative agenda that you charged us to work towards, as well as part of the Pierce County Schools collaborative approach that we've been trying to focus in on as well. So, Mr. Brown, take it away, please.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Chair members of the board, everyone for inviting me tonight. I appreciate being here, and I'm happy to report that I would argue we had a pretty darn successful legislative session. We are fortunate to have a very supportive delegation, not only here in the 27th Legislative District and 29th Legislative District, but as Dr. Garcia just suggested, our work as a collaborative with all the school districts across Pierce County and South Keene County helps us build strong relationships with about 30 legislators, which then is just really good for kids all across our region. So, I think we can start the overview. The legislature began January 9th, and we just went 100% into it. It was a long legislative session, lasted 105 days. They count them all on calendar days, so you go straight through. We work weekends, and it's just kind of how it goes.
And holidays?
And all day, that's right.
No holidays?
Oh, and holidays, that's right, there are no holidays. You just go, you go whole hog into the thing. It was a budget session, so they were building a new biennial budget. So, that's part of the reason why it goes longer than the off-year sessions, which are 60-day sessions. The top issues this year really were education, homelessness and housing issues, workforce support and public safety. And those are really broad buckets, but education ended up with about a $2.2 billion increase over and above what we normally get in the budget, which is usually about 50%. And this year is $70 billion budget, so we're looking, you know, some pretty high numbers. I haven't actually looked at the final numbers or the percentages, but I can argue that K-12 education alone, I'm talking about, gets almost 50% of the budget on a regular basis. For the Tacoma School District, our number-one lead item, I would argue, is the Maritime 253 Skill Center. The Pierce County delegation had been briefed on it prior to the legislative session. A lot of work went into that. We ended up being fortunate in getting that as a Pierce County delegation priorities. So, that goes back to the conversation I was just having about working with all the other school districts across the county. Certainly, all the school districts are invited to be a part of this Skill Center. There will be others, I'm sure, that may want to participate, but the legislators saw that and were willing to give us $8 million for this current capital budget cycle. And it's my understanding, and basically an unspoken agreement, that the remaining four that we'd asked for, the twelve in total, would come in that '25-'27. And we broke it up in that way, number one, to help the legislators with their own budgeting issues, but also to acknowledge the fact that we probably wouldn't be breaking ground until the latter part of this upcoming biennial cycle for the capital budget. So, we're looking very good in that arena. One of our top issues was increasing funding for special education. Legislature has traditionally not fully funded special education. We worked with other school districts in our area, but across the state as well, to make full funding of special education a top priority. We ended up with $371 million additional money in special education. That just basically moves the formula somewhat, so that more money can flow into the school district on a per-pupil basis. The cap for special education will also go up from 13 to 15 over the course of time, with 15%, which is an important thing for school districts across the state. And then, we also get an additional $26 million over the biennium, $13 million per year, for additional, to cover costs for transportation, which is that additional money in student transportation funding. If you look at that last bullet there, the special education four-year outlook spending, because we're modifying the formula, actually carries forward a lot of costs. And so, we're looking at $800 million that 371 this go-round, and then they project out into the two years following that.
So... Just a minor subtlety, just one for the folks that are watching at home, is these dollars are the statewide dollars. These dollars are not dollars that are coming to Tacoma. We will get a portion of those, but we did not get $370 million for Tacoma specifically.
I really tried.
I'm disappointed.
I couldn't quite get to that number.
Charlie and I just wandered halls.
Director Keating, yes, I know.
We did.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're right, it was all statewide, and I think it's noted at least there, but...
Charlie, can I add some context?
Absolutely.
Around speds, special education funding. So, through, so IDA on a federal level is supposed to fully fund at 60% for the federal, but, and then states are responsible for 40%. So, when IDA was passed in 1974, I think, around there, that was the arrangement, and the federal government has not fulfilled their obligation, which is part of where a lot of this advocacy happens with the federal government around funding and then also at the state. So, there's also the holding the state accountable and also holding the federal government accountable in terms of funding. So, and the other thing that, that when, the times that I am Vice President of Stroger, on this last January, when we were talking with our federal delegation with WASDA folks, the costs to provide services has increased. So, that's also part of just trying to help legislators and our congressional delegation understand what actually does it cost, school districts. And that really varies depending on the size of district and the percentage of students that are needing special education services. And I feel confident that Superintendent Garcia will correct me on anything I might have said sideways.
Cool. Who did that?
I will say that the, there is criticism from the state level as to the amount of money that the feds are actually putting in because it's a federal requirement, and the fed doesn't live up to its obligations. And the state says, "We've got to go work the federal government." So, I appreciate that you do that work. So, I was able to say, "We are working with our federal partners on this, but what we're trying to do is, is get the state to pick up a bigger share, so that we don't pick it up at our local level, which is through our local levels."
Well, and just as another clarifying point for the public who's watching is that some districts, like ours in Tacoma, we're very grateful to our voters who continually support, you know, our levies and bond measures, but mostly the levies that continue to backfill this and help pay for the things that the state and feds don't pay for, which they're really mandated to do, but don't. So, the unfunded mandates, we're picking up at the local level through our levy funding. So, thank you to the voters who have always made that possible, but it's, there's still a gap.
Well, and there are a number of school districts that can't.
And that's my point, is that we don't, I mean, we are lucky, but this is a statewide issue, and many, many districts are struggling.
I don't think this is an issue that'll go away, but we made a significant dent in it this year. And thanks to the work that all of you do, Dr. Garcia came down during the legislative session. We had several conversations with top leaders in the legislature, helping make the arguments, and we were able to get to the point where we did it. So, thank you very much. We also had on our legislative agendas, and have for a couple of years, dual-credit college and the high school support, trying to get more students access to college credits at lower costs. And thankfully, this year, we were able to achieve that in Senate Bill 5048, a college and the high school program, where the legislature has essentially agreed to cover the costs for the higher ed, so that the students themselves don't have to pay those costs for higher ed credits to transfer. So, in essence, what we're doing through this type of a program is making it possible for students to get higher ed college credits. In some cases, they can get a fairly substantial number of credits, 15 or more credits. It really puts them on a pathway toward either a two-year or a four-year college degree. And, you know, the more that we can cover for our students here, the better off we are as a society. So, it's been an issue we've worked on over the years. And there's also a bill that is, well, within that bill, I should say, an emphasis on promoting these programs, these college and the high school. And there's also some additional funding for Running Start, which is actually done at the college campus itself, and students get into that as well. But I just wanted to highlight this college and the high school, because it's something Tacoma School District has been very keen on over the years. Another bill popped up, kind of early on in the session, didn't really have it on our legislative agenda, but it is something that we have wanted to do over the course of time. And that was a college acceptance bill that basically asked the school districts to tell the higher education community, you know, what students were going to be graduating from high school. And in some of my conversations with Dr. Garcia, I said, you know, "What do you think of this?" And he said, "Well, it'd be great, we'll give them the names, but we'd sure like to know who gets accepted, so that we can focus on those students who have not been accepted into higher ed and help them in what their transition out of school is going to be." And so, we, we were able to achieve that. We got an amendment into that bill. Senator Marco Elias, who's a friend of ours, liked the idea. He said, "You're right." The Senate Education Committee said, "You're right, let's do it." I believe the bill was 5593. We stuck our language in there, it carried through all the way. We had a couple of, you know, conversations with the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction about the technicalities of it. And I said, "Well, you know, where there's a will, there's a way." And we were able to do it, I think it was channeling Dr. Garcia on that one. So, I'm, I'm, I'm really happy about that bill, I'm pretty proud of that.
Yes.
Does that include colleges outside of our state? Will they communicate?
No, only in the state of Washington, yeah. Yeah, trying to get two colleges out of the state. That would be hard. It's a great goal over time, and might be able to figure out a system to do it. But no, it's only for colleges in the state of Washington. They should have real-time data when they accept our students, and they should communicate that data back to us. It's going to take a little time to get it...
Practice.
Working, yes, but we'll get there eventually. It's just stuff like that. When, when you're, when you're down there every day, when you're working with the legislators, you get this opportunity, you get the chance to say, "Here's an opportunity for us," and we took that opportunity and jumped right in. So, I just think that's, I get a big kick out of that personally. Another big issue for Tacoma School District, and I would argue, school districts all throughout the South Sound region, we have a higher poverty level generally down in the southern, South Sound area, and more students struggle with food, you know, nutrition. And so, the legislature has recognized that over the years, and this year put another $26 million, well, $26 million for the current biennium. They were trying to fund, I think it's 50, any students that are at 50% of the free and reduced lunch level qualification, trying to get food to them. And it's kind of a carryover from what we were doing during the pandemic. They had a little shortfall, so the legislature backfilled that in that program. And then, another $85 million for '23 and '25, and $144 million to get more free lunches to students in need. So, we can have food in our students' stomachs.
What's the 144?
The 144 is over the one, over a five-year period. So, what they did in this budget was to look back at the changes they made in the '21-'23 supplemental budget for this last year. So, they're fully covering the costs for all the school districts right now under that child, well, almost all. But they're, they're covering, what they've identified is the shortfall for the child food program. And then, adding another 85 to cover another small percentage of students, and then, over the four-year period, or five-year period becomes 144 million.
And then, I would just add, and I know I reported this after Cory and I got back from DC in January, the Federal Relations Network Committee that I'm a part of, for WASDA, we've met with the Department of Agriculture about specifically advocating for universal free meals. And so, that was the first time that the Department of Agriculture had ever met with a body of, a group of school board directors. And so, there was, there, this is also advocacy that happens not just at a state level, but also at a federal level, because, you know, it needs to be a shared cost.
Right.
Yeah, shared cost.
It's a federal program, right?
Right, it's a federal policy.
Well, and the Department of Agriculture folks had said, "Well, we've already done this," right? Through, or, you know, like, the argument was like COVID demonstrated that we can provide universal free meals. So, there is, I'm sorry, that was the WASDA, that was us sharing that with the Department of Agriculture and also the congressional delegation. So, it's possible, it's been done, and so, there's at least the groundwork and model, so that hopefully, with the advocacy and a support of Congress, that that funding could come in the future.
And I think there's a general desire by the legislature to increase this program over time. It started as free meals for everybody, but that was a cost that they weren't going to be able to cover. So, they dropped back, but they're going to continue to keep pushing forward, I believe, in this program. Part of our Whole Child Initiative is also to increase the prototypical school model funding adjustments, particularly nurses, counselors, other programs, or other staff people that, that help our students as a whole child, do social and emotional support for the students along with their general education. And the legislature, a couple of years ago, had made a promise to increase those numbers over the course of time. They have kept that promise, at least for this upcoming biennium, and they're increasing funding for nurses and counselors. I wouldn't argue that it is truly the amount that is required for a robust Whole Child program, or what basic education really requires, but it is another increase, and it allows us to continue making that work possible. So, we were happy to see that. And then, I think it's important to note that the state legislature, as part of its workforce support, was very intentional about making sure that employees that it funds in education, as well as throughout state government overall, received raises that are commensurate with some of the costs of living that they've been experiencing over the last couple of years. And that's in healthcare as well. So, this year, the legislature allocated $544 million in additional funding for state-funded basic education employees. And that's on top of the 734 that would have naturally come through the step increases and the rest, the HR, the human resources, general increases that would go. So, that's about, the $544 million is about $1.5 billion when you look at it over the course of the five-year outlook. So, what they did was a 3.7% increase for their implicit price deflator, IPD, for this go-round, and we believe, and they also have next year's at 3.9%. It's important to note that that's just state funding, that doesn't include additional funds for school districts to fund any employees that you hire through your local or federal funding streams. So, those are going to be issues that you'll be addressing, I'm sure, later on this year. So, but that's a, that's a, it's a pretty important piece of what the legislature did this year for education.
There's also just a subtlety that, it's my understanding, it's the first time the legislators have taken a new approach by communicating what the rate or the cost of living will be in future years. And so, in a lot of ways, that's good news, right? People can see it, we can budget in that, and we can also then also see that unfortunately, that gap will continue to widen because it's not covering all the employees. And so, I think it's smart on their part to help us all look at that transparency and see what's coming in the future, not only for families, so they can continue to stay in the region and be a part of the community and employees. And then, for us, for budgeting purposes, it has impacts as well. Thank you.
The, I put on here Pierce County Partners successes, because we do work with our partners. There, even though the Tacoma School District didn't necessarily benefit from some of the regionalization funding changes, we did advocate for making sure that our partner school districts around us received the increases in regionalization that were appropriate, and actually gets them up to levels where we are, so that their staff can enjoy the benefit of the increased salaries, because quite honestly, we are truly a labor pool all throughout the South Sound, and people can easily transfer from one school district to another, and it's only about a five-mile difference in your cost of living, your housing, which is what regionalization was originally designed to do, to help offset costs of living. It's a policy that was adopted in the 2017 McCleary Decision Agreement by the legislature. I am happy to report that I believe that the legislature is going to revisit this portion of the McCleary decision. I think most everybody would acknowledge that this was a policy that didn't meet the expectations that the legislators had when they adopted it. We tried to point that out several times. And I'm, I'm happy that we've got a new, a new group of folks who we didn't expect to find, who got pretty energized on this issue. So, we're, I think that the budget makers and the people that do the education funding models are going to be under a little more pressure to make that funding more equitable across the region.
I also think it ties into the prioritization of housing, affordable housing, and addressing the homeless. So, this was there, we have a legislature who has prioritized this. So, this is one piece of that puzzle, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's very true. Maritime 253 truly was, while we're taking the lead, it is a regional issue, because we'll have partners from other school districts sending students to get the skills, to put them right to work here in Pierce County and building our economy down here, and throughout the region, certainly. But I wanted to put that here on the Partners successes, because others were very supportive of that. And then, I wanted to acknowledge, Madam President, the work on JMAC. And as, as the legislature legislative session began, there were a number of bills that were introduced, and our partners at JMAC reached out to us and said, "Can you sign in the support?", which we did, and helped to say, you know, "These are good proposals that these other partners want." And they turned around and helped us on our stuff as well. And I will say that having that, that partnership with our municipal governments and other colleagues around the Sound just makes Pierce County and our South Sound region that much stronger, which I think is critically important as we go into the future. So, thank you for your work on that, and I'm happy to report that...
Thank you.
They came through, and we reciprocated.
Perfect, just like it's supposed to be.
Just like it's supposed to work. And that is the end of my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if people have a question.
Does anybody have any questions for Charlie? And then, the dais over there, okay? And I, go ahead.
I would like to make a few comments, and no one has any questions.
You go right ahead.
First and foremost, I want to thank our legislators. They have a very difficult task, and I know that, you folks know, you know, being an elected official is not an easy job in trying to help meet the needs of all constituents, especially with limited funds. And when we see these big numbers, I think sometimes that can get lost. And our legislative officers did an amazing job under a difficult time to try to continue to, in a lot of ways, provide stopgaps, do damage control, and also future investments. And it's not lost on us. And I want to thank specifically, I hope folks at home get a chance to thank their Pierce County delegation? Excuse me? They did a phenomenal job trying to listen to the local needs and balancing that with statewide efforts. And that's not lost on me, so I want to thank that. When we see these big numbers, these investments, folks might say, "Well, I thought you guys were talking about cuts." And if you read the headlines across the state, you see very significant cuts in education across the board. And, you know, from a, I guess, practical sense, that doesn't make any sense. How do you have these big investments? And you're saying that there, there's a couple subtleties that we have to at least recognize here in Tacoma. Charlie mentioned it, there are increased, and Lisa, Director Keating, you mentioned it, is costs are continuing to rise for goods, services, contracts. We have local agreements that we have an obligation, and both ethically and legally, to fulfill. And those are added costs on top. You take that, and we have had a declining enrollment in Tacoma, we've talked about this. And so, that, you know, you see those increases, but then, we're not getting as many of those increases because we don't have as many students. Therefore, we don't need as much program. And that also happens at the federal level, too. So, when we see things like title and LAP services, and folks may say, "Well, you're getting more resources." Yeah, but there are less students to capture that. And so, the overall net continues to decline in that. Capital, just for those that may not have heard, that has some very specific requirements. And so, it does not have flexibility to offset basic education costs. And so, as we folks say, "Well, you know, maritime, you could reshift that," or sometimes that, "We can't, those are for capital investments." And then, and we've talked about this publicly, but I think it's just important to talk about it regularly, is we also have the loss of the S R dollars, which is, you know, we've been trying to keep things maintained based off of 2019-20 student enrollment data, because it was the right thing to do, learning loss supports and stuff. We don't have that flexibility anymore. So, I personally want to thank Charlie and Director Keating. I think you did an amazing job helping folks contextualize that. I know that we still have a lot of work to do, budget work inside of Tacoma. We're committed to that, and unfortunately, there's more work to be done. And so, as much as I celebrate the legislative session, it's, it's kind of like, "Okay, and now we start again." I promised Charlie, not literally tomorrow, but maybe Tuesday, we'll get together and we'll start huddling together and say that. So, thank you both.
Can I just add to the comments that Josh made about the legislature? What I would say is that we have a lot of really informed legislators around, and, and ones who are committed to public education as well. And so, even if they, the approach, I mean, like, throughout, I mean, Director Bombright, or President Bombright would ask me, "Give a legislative update." And I'm like, "It's going to change in an hour." Like, where we're at, where, right, the negotiations, and the negotiations, what I mean by that is the conversations of understanding what's in the bills, what's the intent, what's the impact, where's the funding going to come from, what's, and it's like a constant moving target. And so, I feel like the thing that I really appreciate is that there is this openness and willingness by so many of our legislators, and especially our Pierce County delegation, to have those conversations and learn and listen, right? And if we've come to them with a concern, I mean, I feel like they did that really well in the summer of 2020 with the transportation issues that were coming. And they were like, "Oh, we didn't really understand." But there is this relationship that I think, you know, like, so much of this policy work happens because of relationships. And so, I think that that's just important to also highlight, because it, it feels like a lot of moving parts, and it's really, there is a lot of real intentionality, I think, by many, a large proportion of our legislature, to do what they believe in their, and within their ability to do what's best for students, for all students in Washington State.
You do know, Director Keating, that you, you're just pitching for why this is a permanent position for you, just kidding.
I've already told people, nobody else wants it, so Charlie stuck with me.
And you're good at it.
Yay.
Thank you so much, Charlie. I promised Charlie he has other obligations, so we have some other meaty topics to discuss tonight, so if there's nothing else-
Nope, moving on. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent, up 4.2A, guess we have grading policy.
Yes, so we have come to you a couple times, and through Friday reports, through communications, you've seen that we've been talking with staff, we've been talking to families. You have been out talking to students as part of yours, and the impacts of grades and student mental health, and you learned a lot. And now, we are getting to a place of we are in, we will be bringing you some policy recommendations. Not tonight, but tonight, we've asked Assistant Superintendent Zeke Edman to give us an overview of what the work is, give you kind of a preview of some of the general senses of elements of a policy recommendation, and then, you know, we're going to be bringing you some policy recommendations, and I'll just remind you, there will be a first reading. Those, that first reading will then also be brought to the Policy Equity Council.
Equity Policy Review Team.
Thank you, for review, and then that's another opportunity for community members to provide some feedback. And then, of course, you have the opportunity as a community member to provide feedback, excuse me, online, you can do it through written testimony as well, okay? So, with that, Mr. Edman?
Excellent. So, of course, we started all this really winter, right? But even going back a little further, and as we wanted to think about the direction, we kept our mission vision as our recurring piece. So, the questions we were asking, the stakeholders we were meeting with, sometimes we either share this or use this as we develop surveys and questions.
It's on, I think you just need to move it closer.
And things like that. So, tonight, I'm just hoping for a couple pieces for you, the chance to reflect on what students and families were saying about grading, chance, obviously, as you had a chance to hear from students as well, but our teachers and administrators and what they're saying about grading, and then to reimagine what is possible for Tacoma School District when we think about updating our policy. This has been quite a journey. We, Cabinet, have been looking at grading data for the last couple of years, both at the end of each trimester or semester, as well as live grades at the time, just trying to take a snapshot of where our students are at and the impacts. And that's what started with in a small group meeting in December to think through, what are the big ideas, how would we even go about making sure we're asking the right questions? So, we brought some small groups together, and the student listening sessions that you all had a chance to participate in were fantastic. We hit most of the high schools, I actually, there is a five middle schools, I did miss one, but there are five total that we listened to. And then, we also hit three of our elementaries, and it was fantastic to hear even from third graders what they would like to see when it comes to their academic outcomes or the impacts of getting feedback in the classroom. We continued that with family surveys, and we had a huge participation, that was fantastic, 2,469 responses. We asked several different questions, and some of that data is attached in the appendixes in this PowerPoint. And then, we had a chance to listen to some families at the superintendent breakfast, and just, we actually were able to do that a couple times, once in the fall, and then again this spring, and hear directly from them what was impacting them. We did two different staff surveys, the first round, we only had about 136 responses. We took what we gained from that, went a little deeper and more specific in our second round, and had a chance to get 310 responses. We did two small team meetings with teachers, directors, to analyze that feedback. The small team we brought was about 20 people, and that was in person, and we just went through and read all the student statements. So, as you know, during our student listening sessions, we had folks scripting for us, and just trying to group those, find themes, common challenges, successes, and we took that and then brought it to our teacher listening sessions, same thing, they had a chance to hear what students were saying. We did the first one in person, we had about 60 teachers and counselors in that one, and then we did a second one virtually, as we then had more feedback from surveys, so they could see those survey results from families as well as the surveys they had done themselves. And then, our principal sessions included school directors, again, we did one in person and one virtually, one kind of, I'd say, probably February-ish, and the other one here mid to late April. We had multiple work sessions with our instructional coaches, they see that classroom impact. They also helped us script some of the thinking as we went deeper in our questions, analyze some of that feedback. And then, school directors, teaching and learning team, they've had a chance again to review this. Cabinet continues to look at the data, they've been brought along, the same as you have with website and the updates, chance to see the student voices and reflect on that, share out what they're hearing, opportunity to see the other survey results. And then, reviewing grading policies from other districts, we've done that in different teams, working with our student information system as we're bringing in Synergy as our new student information system in Tacoma, making sure we're aware of the features, functionality, and if there's any limitations in there. And then, as Dr. Garcia mentioned, we have the Equity Policy Review Team that we'll see between first and second reading. And then, again, kind of just this spring, just narrowing that focus more and more. The big themes that came up, I can kind of see them here in these boxes on the left, purpose, a lot of conversations about grading scales and topics, and we'll share a little more about topics, the difference between informative and summative assessment, we've heard that from third grade up through our high schoolers, we heard it with our staff, with our families. But you really see a lot about feedback that kept showing up in conversations, and it's subtle when kids say the impact or the next step piece. So, I've gotten this assignment back, and I either have a score, or teachers will write comments, and what that means to them as far as where they are in their understanding of learning, as well as their thinking about their next steps. And so, in our family listening sessions, we heard a similar piece, they appreciate, especially our elementary teachers, put a lot into those report card comments, and so, a lot of folks kind of magnet to that first, to just hear what the teacher sees in their child in that classroom throughout the day, is very powerful.
Zeke, could you, for those who might be watching, can you explain formative and summative?
For sure. So, in the classroom, I think in our traditional lens, we think about classroom work or homework would be formative, things that are practiced, opportunities maybe for groups to come together and do work together, they can even be some of the projects, and the kids will get feedback on those pieces, and they have a different impact on the grade book than maybe a summative, which would be a quiz or a test, an exam, maybe it's a final essay or a larger project. And so, in our current grade books, you might have a teacher that gives more weight on the summative, that impacts that overall grade, and uses that formative opportunity for kids to practice.
Thank you.
And then, we heard a lot about opportunities to retake assessments, I think, you know, whether we're talking to students, or whether we're talking to teachers, or families, a lot of folks recognize we don't always get it on the first try, and so, what would it look like to have a second attempt? And then, ultimately, what we see a lot is report cards, right? That document we put out at the end of semester or trimester that goes on record, and so, we know that families talked a lot about the impact of having that evidence to make academic decisions as a family. So, the only one we're going to unpack today a little bit in detail is purpose, we'll do a little chance to look at some of the data, and then I'll answer questions. The purpose statement is something that has been vetted through all of these different listening sessions, folks have had a chance to give input on, so we'll have that same opportunity here today. The student grading and report cards are a communication tool that encourage students, teachers, and families to value the individual student's learning uniqueness and complexity. These communication tools inform students, families, teachers, schools, and the district, providing an opportunity for dialogue and engagement around evidence of learning and growth. And the grades will be communicated in a manner that is accurately documenting, communicating student progress toward meeting standards. We are a standards-driven instructional model. Number two, provides timely, non-biased feedback to facilitate reflection, self-evaluation, and growth. And number three, are inclusive and equitable, which has been a long time anchor for us in Tacoma. Questions on this part?
So, there's also that invitation that, you know, spend some time with this individually, because it will, it will set the stage. And then, you can always email Zeke, right? You can email each other to say, is this what we want to do, because we're not to that place, and nor would you ever do that in email. But you can send your individual comments as an individual board member directly to Zeke and say, tell me a little bit about this, or, you know, this word seems to capture me in a place, so that invitation is there for you.
Can I, can I ask a question about this particular slide? So, is this the existing definition or purpose that we have been working under before, or is this a new one?
This is new.
So, this is a new one, and can you tell me, because I just don't remember the old one, how it's different from the last, the one we've been working under till now?
So, the current policy just has, it just starts, there's-
Ah.
Right, and it talks a little bit about, it's a communication piece, and it is general.
Okay, got it. So, that's great. And then, the, the three, the three points, this is actually just functional, what you, what you want the system to look like, right? So, it's putting it out there, so parents know what to expect, students know what to expect, teachers know what they're supposed to do.
Correct.
I feel like, not really, well, kind of a question. So, point number two about how grades will be communicated, I get a lot of feedback about timely feedback of grades, not really the non-biased part, just timely. And so, are we building in some factors for teachers to provide that planning time? I taught in the district, I know how rough it is in between classes to try to get that time to document in order for it to go to parents quickly. So, are we thinking about that as we're rolling out a statement to parents that says, and we're going to be timely, and then how do we support teachers?
Correct. And we, in every listening session, every survey piece, that topic's been there, and so, I think we found a sweet spot, we were even with DEA having that conversation today, so-
Oh, nice.
Just, is there a perfect answer? But I think there is a, a comfortable space where, you know, it's an 18-week semester, so I don't know that I need, right, day by day, low by low, but what are those intervals that make sense?
Okay.
So, am I, I just want to probe a little bit further to what you might be getting at. Would it be helpful? I don't see timely anywhere in any of these definitions. So, is that because timely's different to each person, or, or do we want to emphasize what Director Calroy's talking about, and to make sure that we aren't, we are getting them to students in a timely fashion?
So, I'm going to interject. So, you set a policy, and you would be approving a policy-
Right.
-which would give you, us, the charge to, what would we define regulation based off of that policy? And so, there will be elements that we will, that will be included in a regulation that may be more prescriptive, and I'm not saying that we aren't to that place, and this is very important, that this is, this is a draft, a working draft right now. And so, you-
Go ahead. I was just saying, I think timely would be one of those policy level things that we might want to think about.
You will have that choice and that opportunity, you always have the flexibility, these are your policies by governance, but I also want to make sure-
I'm a figure, I got to govern.
That you have an opportunity to remember that their policy has to be in a place that it is guiding, those guiding principles. You would, I would encourage you to think about your anti-racist policy and your work there, that you, you did put some things in there that says, you know, it may look like for this, the superintendent will develop regulations to define timeliness, where you may not timestamp the exact timeliness in that aspect in a policy.
Then it's a factor that the superintendent will consider.
You've done that in different ways, and so, you're really going to want to pause, this is, this policy has not been updated for a number of years. And, you know, just even going a little deeper, this was, remember our COVID experience, right? The state came in and said, thou shalt do X.
Yeah.
And for you, the folks, if you forgot, you spent a lot of time on, like, unpacking like this, so what does that mean? Does everybody get an A, does everybody, you know, not get an A? And so, we've been talking about this, and so, yeah, this is now getting to that edge where you're going to have to really weigh in and say, is that what I want in this? But this is, this is not defined, and for those that are watching at home, this is, this is not the purpose statement, it could be, but we're intentionally putting it out there for you in a work study to say, you got some time to noodle on this-
Yeah.
-but time is running out.
So, so actually, just as a point, too, I do see it says provides timely, non-biased, so it's already in there. It just, then the regulation will go deeper.
I'm saying, Madam President, you have a choice as a board to define to the level of specificity in policy that you desire.
And then, this is a district-wide policy, so that means all grade levels and things like that, so timely will look different for our elementary versus our high school things like that.
Exactly.
He's nodding his head, okay.
That's the thing, right? Like, it, as we, as you process this, right, you'll see first round, you'll have a chance to then give us feedback.
So, in that space, you might add, that is developmentally appropriate. So, my pause, too, is you are in charge of policy, you could get really into the, the level by level, word by word, and you could put all that in policy. We would recommend that you don't, you haven't typically done that, there is typically a regulation that is associated with that. You can also provide that feedback in the regulations, please make sure that we can demonstrate-
Developmentally appropriate, I like, I like that, too.
But you, you have to balance that out, and start to, in the next couple of weeks, as you see that first round come, you're going to want to measure how deep you want to go with your level of specificity. And as you can see, I don't know the depth of the amount of feedback, and I want to thank Zeke publicly for, and start team for reaching out that your depth and trying to reach out, but you heard all kinds of things.
Yes, we did, yes, we did.
And so, this is a very big policy, and so, I, I know, I want us to pause enough to say, you have to get comfortable with the level of depth that you want, knowing that there is not one way to do it, but what did you hear from kids? What are the most critical elements? How much definition do you have to provide in order for it to be equitable? And how much flexibility do you have to provide in order for it to be real inside the classroom?
Okay.
Grading 150 essays is different than grading-
Kindergarten work, it's beautiful work.
I was going to say, as, you know, a pop quiz, multiple choice, true, false, and so, you know that, you've experienced that, and so, you're going to have to measure that level of, is it this side of line, or this side of line, or does that line go like this and it's super quick? Thank you, Zeke.
I have a question, and you might get to this, so, later in the discussion. So, one of the things that I've really thought a lot about from the listening sessions that I participated in was, there was a distinct difference between the students that had just transitioned, whether they were the sixth graders, the ninth graders, the third grader, there was a, there was like, and eighth graders, right? There was a real, these students articulated, like, having either not enough support, not being prepared enough, not understanding, and I realize that's not specific to grading, but it did, it was a part of the grading conversation. So, if that's like down the road for a conversation, it's just something that I've thought quite a bit about. And the levels of, the, the schools that I got to do the sessions with, you and your team with, there, there was also a distinction between the students who transitioned at different points during COVID. So, like, the seniors and seniors, they had a different perspective than the freshmen and sophomore, depending on where they were and how middle school impacted, particularly the freshmen and sophomores, and then the juniors and seniors. And so, and so, as we think about, like, the granular level of things and that detail, like, I think about circumstances that we don't know that might be down the road, maybe not like the way it was in the past, but- not like the way it was in the past, but certainly like there are considerations that I have just thought quite a bit about in, in those transitions. And transitioning, supporting a student in transition has already had previously been challenging. And so, but there were definite, the, the students that we, that I got to listen to were very, like, clear in articulating, this is what I really would have liked to see. This would have been far more helpful at, at whether they were sixth grade, whether they were a sophomore, or whether they were a senior. So.
You ready?
Sure.
Keep, keep it driving it.
So in the appendix, you're going to see several slides that tie to the boxes on the left, so those topics. I just want to walk you through one because the data is a little different than what we might see. At the bottom, you'll see the survey results. So those are pretty easy. We asked the multiple choice question. You see the data from it. This is the qualitative analysis of all the statements we heard, either in people's comments in the survey or in the listening sessions, depending on which group we were listening to. And what we were able to then pull is, you'll see a few specific comments at the bottom. But on the student, then family, then staff, at the top, what makes this a little different is, we had hundreds of students that we ended up talking to by the end, because we also pulled in some student interviews we did last year as well around grading. And 22% related to a need for a common scale, kind of going to your piece, like, I had a scale in elementary, I had one in middle, and then I had one in high school, or even some kids had changed schools, right? So it's not, out of all the kids, almost one in four made mention of that piece. On the second, we also asked questions around, sometimes when you look at grade books, you might have things in there for participation, or attendance, or these other things that aren't formative and summative. And so we just asked about that. And so some, in this case, 13% of students related to whether behavior is included in a grade. And then in their comments, we were able to extract whether they found that helpful or hindering. And so the same goes for family. 21% of those families that left comments made mention about having a common scale. And then on the staff side, 65% making mention of a need for a common scale. So as you go through and look at all the rest of this content, we wanted to capture kind of a summary and then give you specific line quotes that we pulled as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions that have popped up for you since, from the beginning? Director Leon, do you have any questions? Director McElroy?
It's not like a question, but as I went through the appendix and just thinking back on the conversations we have with kids and things like that, hearing what they want to hear, even if it's bad, they just want to hear, they want to understand. And what I really took away from all the conversation is seeking to understand from the parent's side to the children's side, and then teachers, we're living experts, right? So we just know everything. And even when we don't, that's how our students and our families kind of relate to us. And so, again, I know you're meeting with TEA, you guys are talking that through, and how is that going to look so that children and parents really can hear feedback from who they believe the expert is, especially when it comes to education? So just really taking that and thinking about that. That's what I've been thinking about the most is, what do they really want to know? They want to know, am I learning anything? Did I learn anything? Did I accomplish something? I don't need a gold sticker, but tell me that I learned it so I can move to like the next skill, especially those sophomores, they were really big on, but did I master the skill? And so, and then also when they tell their parents, yeah, I got a C, but I mastered the skill, it just kind of shifts that conversation. So not a question, but just bringing that back up again, that's what I've been really ruminating on since I started this with you.
I think that's in that purpose space where we, it is a communication tool, right? It is a dialogue space.
And it's hard, this just makes me, reminds me of the timely piece, because so many of the students talked about if they got a particular grade, or they got, they didn't get the grade, they got the low mark auto call. And then that just like was a cascade impact or effect at home, whether for the student individually, or the parents are like, what is happening? What are you, I mean, I, you know, as a parent who's received some of those articles, I fly to like, where, what, where is your homework? Print to me, what? And there's that timely piece of, well, my teacher hasn't done that. And what some of the, like, the students did communicate is like, my parents didn't really believe me when I said that. And so that's also just a piece that I think, like, that piece of the stress that comes, that the impact on students was some of the pieces that I know that were talked about.
One of the other pieces that came up a lot in, in the student conversations were the incon, was the inconsistency among teachers i- in, on the same subject matter. And the, some were super hard graders, some let you do retakes, others didn't. And there was that sense of, it wasn't fair, and it was stressful for students in the quote harder classes. And so I think that gets back to looking at, at, at teacher training and, and just sort of seeing how, I mean, it's not to say that the stricter teacher looking for more isn't actually the better option, I'm just saying that it exists. And so that's, makes it harder for students to, to not feel, if that, if they're not succeeding in that classroom for whatever reason, to not then feel defeated. But that doesn't mean they're not learning the material. And so how do we get to the point, which is, are they learning the material?
Grades should be also a reflection of the learning.
Yeah.
So in that purpose piece is, you know, have, as a, as a struggling learner, struggling student, and as a dad, and then we also heard this as well, is, grades are important to families. They are an indicator of that level of safety. Is there evidence that not only my child is learning, but they are going to have opportunities for the future?
Yeah.
There is that balance between the subjectivity of what's stricts, right? We, I'll remind us, we asked those questions and we dove a little deeper and they were like, oh, well, I don't necessarily think that way. What we heard is tremendous diversity. That's what we heard. We hear tremendous diversity and, and a desire for some level of consistency and a desire for some level of flexibility. And so our task ahead is, is complex, it's nuanced. It will hopefully, I would, I would encourage you to remember, and Zeke and I had this conversation, we're not looking for perfection because that is a lot of interpretation. We're looking for, is it, is it better? Is it more equitable? Does it align with our anti-racist policy? Does it help students, families, and staff? That's what we're looking to do. And so-
Lot to think about.
Lots to think about.
The other thing this makes me think about too is like, as we evolve and expand the Maritime Skills Academy and grading, and what does that look like? And how is that, how, what is that implementation like? Because the subjects are so vast, right? Like even, even just in basic K-12, like, there's so many different subject matters. And so having more consistency is just challenging.
Right.
It's complicated. So I just, as, as we add more opportunities and more opportunities for grading and grades in very different ways for our students through, say, the Maritime Skills Academy, that just, I think, yeah, I just, it just, it reminds me how complicated it all is.
And the other thing that I think about, having had two, two students through the entire system, beginning to end, and me being a very involved parent in the classroom, all the way up, much to their chagrin and disappointment, all the way up. But anyway, the point is, is that I know teachers, there are different styles. And, and some of what we hear at board level is messages from parents saying, my child's been picked on, or my child's been treated differently. It's perception, it's also sometimes true. And so in terms of being treated, you know, differently. So I, how do we, as we're looking at this definition, I hope we're also looking at the professional development for teachers that's going to hopefully reflect the new approach, so that teachers can be looking at, at how they can be more equitable throughout the practices in the schools, you know, and not just grading, it's not just about grading, it's about, because that's where the behavior comes in and how that's reflected, and, and the attendance and the participation and all those things.
Which I appreciate that conversation. I will, I'm giving you a little preview, I will guide us back to this very specific purpose. This is not a policy that is going to address everything in our educational system. You are-
It's gone grading.
It's gone grading. And that balance between curriculum, what's the difference between curriculum, assessments, standards, and grades. And so this is, they're all interwoven, but this policy is very specific. It's that communication between, and your purpose statement is very specific. And so you may, you may want to feel that gravity of, well, I want to make this a more encompassing policy, statement, purpose statement. Malik will have to balance this in, as a little preview of, he's going to have to run this wherever we get to, and run several different laws, to make sure that, you know, we aren't doing something that we think is really well-intended, but we can't legally do. And balancing, what does behavior mean? Can you put behavior in grades? Is that what we mean by effort, right, versus behavior, versus, I wasn't, and so there's, there's a lot of work to head, so.
Cool. All right. So thank you. Does anybody else want to shot at, Keith, Zeke? Okay, Zeke, thank you so much. This was great work. And I always love, I just want to compliment you, I always love your PowerPoints, they're very robust.
They're very colorful.
They're colorful, and you know how much I love color? And I just have to say, they're also super understandable. So you take complex issues and you make them understandable. So thank you very much. And I will be diving deeper, I'm going to keep this one on the back burner and keep looking at it, so you'll be hearing from me. All right, cool. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, Superintendent.
Madam President, this is your work.
Zeke?
Thank you.
I'll remind you, I believe back in August, every year you're getting ready to restart. So you, for those that are home, you have, what you have already done is you have strategic plan goals, right, and benchmarks. And those are your district improvement plans, those are, this is how you monitor success inside the district. And then you, as a board, have individual work goals, meaning individual as a collective body. And in August, typically you have a retreat, you discuss, what are our goals? What do we want to dive deeper into, which is aligned oftentimes to the strategic plan goals, but may look a little different in the language? So we may not see that explicit connection sometimes in the language, but they are definitely aligned. I mean, so you established a couple of different goals. One is to listen to students around mental health in listening sessions, we just talked about how you did that. And another one was, is that you wanted to do an environmental policy gap analysis. You wanted to say, so we want to learn more about our environmental practices, but our work is at the policy level, and let's start with, what are our current environmental policies? And so you charged me to work with the staff, which I am then-
Congratulations.
General counsel, it was a policy opportunity, and some of the staff to say, let's go in and let's do, do a gap analysis. Before we, we say, here's what we need to do in practice, let's see what's there. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Malik to describe his work, and we will go from there.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much, Superintendent. So yeah, so this was the-
Done.
Okay, good. So this, this is a goal that we set forth in the fall, beginning of the year, to review policies connected to environmental sustainability and environmental stewardship. And so we're going to do exactly what Josh said, we're going to take a look first. He's, he's, Josh is absolutely right, this is really aligned to what your strategic plan goals are. As we'll see shortly, you'll find connections in this board goal to academic excellence, because there's an educational and a curricular component of environmental sustainability. You'll find connections to partnerships. You'll be seeing a lot of examples, a lot of pictures of what this community partnership around environmental sustainability looks like. You'll see some examples around health and safety, you'll see some examples around operations. So I think aligned in a lot of ways. So we'll jump right into what Josh said, we're going right into a gap analysis first by looking at, what are the policies we've adopted at the Tacoma School District historically around environmental sustainability and stewardship? So we have two that address this board goal head-on, meaning that we have two board policies, they both live in the 6,000 series, this is management support. So this doesn't just apply to students in the, you know, the, you know, 3,000 series, it doesn't just apply to staff in the 5,000 series, this applies across the entire organization. So that's why they're in the 6,000 series and management support. And these are the two places where we, as a school district, make a commitment to environmental sustainability, environmental stewardship. What you're not going to see us dig so much into today are some of the related policies that don't really get at the commitment part. So for example, we have a school gardens policy, if there's, which some of us may have actually worked on, I think you may have been here, for some of the school gardens work. So we have that, we have an outdoor education policy, but we really don't have a place where we're in those, where we're committing to sustainability or to stewardship goals. This is where our school district's commitments live, either in 6810 or 6890. So we'll summarize both of those briefly, and we'll talk about what the legal landscape around it looks like, what the instructional and curricular impact looks like, what does the facilities and management piece look like, and finally, what does the partnerships piece look like? So go into 6810 first. So policy 6810 was written in 2014. The title of it is Efficient and Responsible Use of Resources. And it really does three things. It makes commitments for the district. Some of this language in number one here is taken, copied and pasted straight from the policy, that sustainability should be integral, that's a word used by the policy, integral to building operations, and that sustainability should be used as an educational tool, kind of in that instructional and curricular sense that we were talking about. So that's the first thing it does. Second, it sets out what the district's long-term goals are in looking at this issue of sustainability. So in 2014, we identified four sort of goals that we have in this area. We wanted to reduce the use of resources. In particular, this is fossil fuels, electricity, water. We wanted to encourage recycling. We wanted to implement conservation standards. This is in both construction and in the ongoing maintenance of our buildings, so conservation standards in both those areas. And we wanted to educate students and staff around conservation of district resources. So those are two of the things. The third thing that this policy does is it identifies the areas the district should focus in when we think about sustainability. It identifies these eight areas, they're broad, some of these are sort of subcategories. The policy is not long, it's only about a one-page policy. There is no regulation associated with it, so it's just a standalone policy. And at the time, in 2014, this was, this was the area the board had said we should look at, management of resources, utility accounting, that, that one is thinking about the ongoing monthly cost we pay Tacoma Public Utilities, that's what that one's talking about. Transportation, education, recycling, expectations, that was for both students and staff on being aware of their use of district resources. Fiscal responsibility and sustainable buildings. So those eight areas are where in 6810, we say, we want particularly to focus on this. So that's 6810 in a nutshell. Like I said, it's not a very long policy. At the end of this presentation, we might have some maybe recommended next steps, and certainly we'll take your direction as to whether we head in any direction or what direction we might head in. But, but that's what 6810 says in a nutshell. The second policy where we make commitments to environmental sustainability is in 6890. This was written quite a while ago, in the year 2000. This is one on the list of things we, we have to review anyway. And this one is not, if you pull up this policy at home, or if you pull it up here, I think on the laptops, you'll see this is not a terribly easy-to-read policy. It was written really for one purpose, and that is to make sure we're compliant with a state law that requires all state agencies, local agencies, to do an environmental impact analysis when it makes decisions that could impact the environment. So that's what this 6890 does. It's very many pages, but it's many pages because it says, the school district hereby adopts the standards set forth by the state in SEPA, which include the following, and then it lists all the different rules that we're required to abide by. If you've been looking on the planning and construction website lately, you'll see this policy at play. You'll see, for example, a notice by Chris or Morris that says, the school district intends to build some tennis courts at Brown's Point. We've, we're issuing this DNS designation of nonsignificance to establish that there's not a significant environmental impact by the building of these tennis courts.
Based on this?
Based on these rules, yes, exactly. We are going to knock down the old Bryant Building because we're building a new Bryant Building. There isn't a significant environmental impact. Most of the work that we do as a district won't have a significant enough environmental impact, but it's a case-by-case analysis. So this is a required policy, we have to have it. And we make commitments here because the state has required us to make these commitments. So think of 6810 as the one where we say, this is how we are going to look at environmental sustainability. Think of 6890 as saying, we are also going to do the things the state says all local and state agencies have to do. The city of Tacoma has it, Pierce County has it, all these agencies also have it. We all do these environmental impact studies. So what do these look like, sort of a, you know, that's what the policy landscape looks like. So what are some of this more practical reality pieces to it? I connected with Chris, members of his team, you know, special thank you to Jeff Rogers and Michael Kanak, our environmental, our sustainability manager, for helping me understand me, uh, understand some of the commitments that they've made, uh, as sort of their departments. And this is, this is what they look for as they go around, um, building buildings, doing some maintenance stuff. Um, they look for sustainable building design and construction. Uh, Michael gave me some specific points he wanted me to point out tonight. I'll, I'll share with you. Uh, we look at green space development and outdoor learning areas, energy efficient initiatives and savings, water conservation efforts, water reduction and recycling programs. Uh, there's some initiatives related to transportation as well out of the operational side. Uh, so some of this places, what does this look like specifically? Um, when we make decisions about landscaping, for example, as we think about sustainable building design and construction or green space areas, uh, it was important that we look at drought-resistant plants that may need less watering, um, in order to survive. So there's a lower sort of fiscal cost to keep these things in place. Uh, looking at things like windows that are more efficient, heat, heating and cooling systems that don't use as much power, uh, moving away from natural gas as an energy source. Uh, those are the kinds of decisions that they make to sort of do this water conservation, water reduction, um, you know, green space, sustainable building. We have another example here. I was giving a picture of, uh, do I have to aim this thing at some?
Malik, like a rain garden would also like be part of that water conservation.
Yeah, we have one at Silas, uh, Michael Knack up a couple of years ago. Is there something I gotta do with this?
You gotta have the touch.
I'm upset. Very upset. You're gonna have to keep doing it because, oh, they're helping me. Melissa, that didn't want nothing you did. I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, and so, yeah, so. Yeah, the, uh, ring, uh, the rain garden we have, um, the, the one I'm thinking of is one at Silas that, uh, Jeff Rogers, our, uh, environmental safety manager and Michael Knack, our sustainability manager, um, helped Bernadette and the team put together also a community partnership endeavor. Um, we worked with a, a local nonprofit around, um, environmental sustainability for that. Uh, you can see here, we have, um, some of the solar panels on the top of Hilltop Heritage from a few years ago. Uh, and so that's kind of what the facilities and operational piece of this looks like. It's building and then it's also the maintenance of the things that we have. Um, one example that, uh, Michael shared with me is thinking about if you've been to Mount T in the evenings for a family program, you may notice the lights are now LED lights rather than the old kind of lights we used to have. There's a health and safety impact in that the parking lot is much brighter now than it used to be when you're there in the evenings. And those are things that are cheaper to operate on a yearly basis and then require less maintenance to go in and change bulbs on a kind of an ongoing year-long basis. So really sort of putting our investments into those more efficient type sustainable technologies. If you could hit the next one, thank you. Um, so that's a facilities piece. Now here's a curricular and instructional framework to this. Thank you to Zeke, especially for making sure I got the implementation of this correct. This is really his area of expertise. I can tell you about the law. So the law, what the law says is that, and this is every school district in the state, we're all required as part of our common school curriculum to teach about conservation, natural resources and the environment with an emphasis of solving the problems related to the environment. That's what the law says schools in Washington should do as part of what it teaches. On the next slide, you'll see how OSPI incorporated this legal requirement. So what they said is, okay, all of our schools in Washington has to teach on these areas. We're going to break it up into three sections. And what we're going to do is push it out in an interdisciplinary manner across different grade levels. So from an instructional perspective, when we think about teaching environmental sustainability education, ESE is the acronym OSPI has, you're either looking at, looking at ecological, social and economic systems, the natural environment or sustainability education. And what they do is they don't have a unit every year for every grade level that says, now we're going to talk about sustainability. They try to in, sort of integrate it into the core curriculum. So for example, in an elementary classroom, you might find a group of third graders talking about the water cycle. It rains and it evaporates and it moves from here to there. You might have some high schoolers talking about ancient Mesopotamian irrigation techniques. You might have, and that could happen, you know, there could be a history component. There could be a.
Check out Legal Counsel.
I did use to, I did use to be a secondary science teacher as a. I didn't have that one. I didn't have that one locked up. That was, that was my history as a, as a science teacher. Um, so you might see it in different places. Uh, now what you'll see in secondary, oh, I don't have it. If you could go one more, is you'll find it integrated. This is, uh, the course codes for different classes we have at the secondary level. You might see specific classes on it as students get older. So students might be able to take CTE coursework. I believe that's the purple, um, on things like sustainable landscaping and sustainable agriculture, but you might also see the green is science, uh, natural resources, um, environmental biology, you know, what are ways to do farm management techniques, acro ecology and sustainability. So as the students get older, they may be able to select, I want to take a class and I want it to count towards a science credit. Um, a lot of these are actually also CTE dual credit.
They're dual, they're all dual credit CTE programs.
Yeah, we, we really do a great, I've been told by my colleagues in other places, really do a great job trying to maximize the opportunities for those dual credit spots for our students. Um, so as they get older, they can make these elections, uh, but the way OSPI has laid it out for us really is to try to integrate it across grade levels in different places. Um, we also have quite a bit of outdoor education that we do, and, um, I've got some, uh, pictures from our schools that we can probably go through if you, if you click. Uh, so this is, uh, members of Zeke's team, he has instructional facilitators that specialize in specific content areas. Um, as you can imagine, a lot of this instructional and sort of curricular work goes on in the science classroom. So our science IFs do quite a bit of work around getting students outside to do some outdoor education. This is a trip to Point Defiance Park. Uh, if you click through, you can see, um, I had the, with, along with, uh, Deputy Superintendent Nolan had the pleasure of going to Jefferson Elementary, I believe it was, where we were able to look at where the students grow salmon before they released them into, uh, I believe it's Swan Creek here in Tacoma. Um, so that's some more of that work at play. Uh, these are our high school students, um, as part of the, uh, community partnership we have with the Puyallup Tribe, uh, raising Chinook salmon, um, is part of a, trying to help the southern resident orca population we have, um, at Point Defiance Marina. Uh, Michael was kind enough to share this one with me. We had a project with IDEA where we looked at using more sustainable building materials, uh, in partnership with the city, uh, Washington State and, uh, Washington State University and, um, a contractor that does some of this work, uh, looking at permeable pavement, uh, looking at the impacts of trying to basically maximize the water that we can save as it, uh, as it traverses our area before it gets to storm drains. Um, you'll notice that some of these things, and this will come up, we'll, we'll highlight this in the recommendations at the end, some of these kinds of projects may be one-offs. For example, we're not going to go every year and repave IDEA, but others could be systematized if we had the, uh, buy-in with community partners and we had the ability and manpower to sort of make these perhaps a, a yearly type thing. You know, we may, at the end, you'll see that, that may be the, if you think about how you want to push this goal forward in the future board, uh, resorts, or not resorts, um, retreats or future study sessions, like there may be some ideas popping up as, as we go through.
Well, and some interesting things around that is I think, you know, we're, we're struggling, it's getting warmer here.
Sure is.
And so when, when we, you know, the pavement that we use is going to start melting like it is in California and other places that have, Oregon, Oregon had just melting roads because they're just not used to being that hot last year.
I did not know that.
Yeah, and so I think that's a really interesting, uh, piece that our students are already ahead of the game, thinking about ways where we can make it more permeable and water can go straight through and hit, and it won't be this same old thing we're used to, but anyway.
Yeah. Well, here we have a partnership with high school students. Um, this is the Youth Marine Foundation, uh, we have here, uh, in Region Eleven. Um, the last one, I think you have a picture of sustainability is sort of a built-in part of Maritime Two Five Three. Uh, as you can see, you know, uh, sort of an acknowledgement of based on where we are, um, stewardship over the waterways in our area, a very important part of Maritime Two Five Three and our sustainability efforts generally. Uh, and so then if you go to the next slide, uh, there's also, we don't have any policy language around it, but we do have opportunities to explore non-curricular partnerships. So, uh, you know, this is a partnership we have with Tacoma Trees Foundation where we, um, I don't know if it's every single year, but I've seen it several years now because my children come home with brown shirts that say, I planted a tree, uh, where folk go out and I don't go with them, but I'm told that's what they do when they're out there. I'm usually asleep at that time, like, nah, it's too early for me. But, um, so looking at extracurricular type partnerships where we can sort of push this environmental sustainability in a way that doesn't necessarily generate credit, maybe isn't tied to a grade, uh, but taking advantage of local environmental organizations coming up with partnerships and doing this kind of work. A wonderful picture of you, Director McElroy.
Yes, you're looking very happy.
I did so much work that day. I did work at Mount Tahoma that day. There were so many people, they didn't even need my help. I was like, wait, but I want to dig. They're like, you can dig in two weeks.
Got it. Yeah. Um, and so what we think about where we go from here, I mean, we've talked about what's our policy language in this topic? We've looked at what's the legal landscape behind some of our requirements? We've seen how does instructionally, how do people go about this work? What are we doing from a facilities perspective? Where do we have some of these wonderful partnerships? What would our next steps be to push this goal? This is certainly up to y'all and we'll take it at your direction, uh, but just some ideas that I had, I just put a couple on there. Um, one thing, just being your attorney, the one on the right, I would strongly suggest is looking into rewrite, um, for sixty-eight-ninety. Uh, the law's changed many times since the year two thousand on what the requirements of SEPA are, uh, just to bring us in compliance at a minimum and make it maybe more easy to read for members of the public because it really is a, an obtuse policy that just, it reads like a law rather than a, a policy. That might be something we might want to think about for a future board retreat. Maybe we also consider whether the goals established in sixty-eight-ten, do those continue to be the right goals? Is a focus on recycling and water conservation? Are these the right things in 2023? We'll, we'll take your leadership there. Are the areas of focus, are those the right places where the district should focus? Um, and then I talked to our, our friend Amanda Scott Thomas on the other recommendation. Uh, she had some great ideas about how we can systematize some of these ongoing community partnerships to make some of these things a thing that Tacoma School District does every year rather than sort of a one-off type opportunity. Um, I talked to her about what, what might the barriers be for some of the community organizations and she and I might have some work to do trying, in particular, me trying to maybe alleviate some maybe insurance requirements or some of these other things that can be a barrier for smaller organizations. So I can work with her to see what we can do there. Uh, but that was the recommendation that she had. Um, because as you can imagine, these activities aren't always done on the back of an MOU that's formal or on the back, it, you know, some, sometimes people have an idea. There's another one that she pointed out that's not on here, but the walk bike roll to school rather than having folk drive. Um, you know, there's not a formal, uh, MOU that says we do this every year. It's just, it's, it's sort of the ground swell of, of public support and the work of the fine people that, um, that partner with us. But if there are ways to systematize this, maybe that's a direction that can, that can help advance this goal and, um, and we could talk about it at a retreat, but I'm certainly welcome to any other ideas you have to, to move this forward.
Director Leon, did you have something you wanted to ask about?
Sure, I think, um.
It's on, it's on.
It's on, okay. Um, so we're, we have good initiatives, good, um, plans that have already been in place in what you've discussed. I think, uh, obviously it's a, it's an important topic for our community, for the world, as you've talked about for all these reasons. Um, in sixty-eight-ten, I think, you know, you mentioned the list there of, uh, the, the accounting, the transportation, um, things that I think we should continue to do. I think part of the most important thing we do is the education piece, right? Because that's what we're in the business of. Um, but so educating our, our youth to then understand what environmental stewardship is. So then they go, when they, while they're in school too, but when they go off into the world, whatever work they, they, uh, go to do or whatever impact they have, that they, um, look at the world in that lens and change whatever it is, their, their work environment, they might go to their politics, they might go into, um, so I think that's probably the biggest impact we have and we're already doing that. We talked about how it's integrated throughout, throughout the grades. So just if we can figure out ways to make that stickier in kids, in kids' brains, um, I mean, adults' brains too, sure, but we've got kids, what we're dealing with right now. To let them, uh, go out and then have a bigger impact, a bigger footprint. I mean, recycling is important, yes, but we all know it's, it's hard to actually recycle plastic anyway. We'd like to recycle plastic, but the answer might be reduce, like don't have so much plastic, right? Use paper or, and there's issues there, right? There's limited trees, so there's no easy answer, but, um, that's why we think we need our youth to help us understand the problems and gravity of all and go forward. So examples could be, I think a priority doing this, they, they, I'm sure they study, they do this, that, that permeable pavement and they're doing studies there and understand, um, scientific studies that the students are doing to understand the difference in their permeable pavement versus other pavement. Uh, we're not going to put new, uh, solar panels on each school each year, uh, the ones that already have it, but how much money is that saving? How much energy is that saving? How much, you know, uh, gas power is that saving? Um, and those are just studies that they can continue to do and learn from. I'm, I'm sure the science teachers and the other teachers are already doing that work, so.
Yeah.
Um, and in the state, the sixty-eight-ninety, is that the one, the second one?
Yes, correct.
Right now, the environmental impacts, it says we must have an environmental impact study on anything we do, is what the state is saying essentially, right? We must study it before we build something or change something.
Yes, and if there's a, there's an exception, if there's something that qualifies for DNS, a designation of, you know, non-significant impact on the environment, then you go forward and, and you can go ahead and do it. If there is a significant impact, there are many more steps to follow.
So, right, so if we do the study, it either impacts negatively, it's neutral, or it's positively, I guess there's kind of three ways to look at that. And if it's negative, then we have more steps to try to prevent it from being negative. Hopefully it's positive and if anything, it's neutral. So.
Right, right.
I think, I think we're already working towards trying to make everything positive, but, um, bringing that out so that the public understands that more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are great ideas. Director McElroy, do you have comments or thoughts on next steps or comments that, um, Malik has brought forth into, to concerning to you?
Um, just, um, the work that, the work to formalize and systemize ongoing sustainable community, um, partnerships. I really thought about you and your work with JMAC and kind of getting a calendar of sustainability going. So like when the city was doing a community-wide cleanup, maybe had we known about it, it could have been something we roll out in partnership. Um, like Amanda Scott Thomas is talking about how do we develop these partnerships? They're already doing it. Why, why reinvent the wheel? Let's just hop on that bandwagon and do good work at the same time. Um, just things to think about. And I know you and Director Stroger or Vice President Stroger are doing that work at JMAC, so just kind of bringing that to their forefront, like, hey, guys, so we're working on the schools and we want to know what you're doing so that we can all become part of that work. You've been so strategic in that and so many other areas, so just adding more to your plate, but thank you.
Oh, no, no, that's great, actually, because we're starting to do that around violence prevention and people are starting to say, this is what I'm doing. And then people are just starting to throw that information in. So, yeah, absolutely. We're going to bring that up about environmental stuff. That'll be great. Good suggestion.
Well, and I would just add to that, like that communication piece is often that gap, right? Like what's happening, what is, what are our partners doing, our other municipal, municipal partners, but we didn't know about it until, like, we saw people doing the thing. We're like, wait, we would have, like, we didn't know. So, and that's, I think, like an ongoing issue. The, and, and this isn't really, um, in thinking about sixty-eight-ten, um, thinking about when that policy was adopted, was developed and adopted, like the costs, um, to recycle like the costs to recycle and reduction in recycling has changed significantly, right? So there's a financial impact to it and also the city's like, we, no one's taking it, right? No one's taking our garbage, so we can't, so the, so there's been from the city, a reduction in recycling. So then what does that cost toward, you know? So that seems like that would be a consideration. And then I think too, like if, as we think about the sustainability pieces, you know, the, the one school we have that has solar panels, like that, the financial investment to that, there is not going to be a financial return necessarily on investment because of how long, I mean, it's going to take 75 years before we reap the financial benefit of the initial investment. And in that timeframe, the panels will have to be replaced. So it's actually cost, because the supply and demand isn't there yet, to make it more sustainable for our, you know, like for larger, for organizations and municipalities to do more things like add solar panels. Like the infrastructure doesn't exist yet. And so those are just like some of the, a couple of things that I was thinking about in regards to 6810.
And thank you, Malik, this was a very thorough presentation. And I know that we asked, you know, this is what we asked for, which was what do our policies look like? And actually, I learned a lot, which is, which was the goal, right? So I didn't even know that half of these things were in place. So that's really helpful. And as you mentioned, there are many other policies that are tangentially linked because their implementation or they're also in alignment. And I guess I want to sort of get back to something that Director Leon brought up about the, the role of teaching and with our students. And so a lot of these are about our own district behaviors. But I think one of the things we had talked about in last August when we picked this as a goal was how do we, in talking to a lot of students, younger students especially, there's a, there's a fear that they have about the world, you know, kind of falling apart in, in, in front of them, you know? And they're, and everyone's looking to this next generation to, to save, save the world. And I don't think they feel equipped to do that. I don't think they've, you know, so I'm, I'm trying to think, how can we better help them become the stewards of the environment that, and the change agents that can, as they grow older to be making, to be, you know, stepping up into leadership positions? How can they be, become the leaders that we need? And so I don't know if the integrated curriculum that you showed where the, where this O S P I had put that we're just sort of integrating it in, I think that's actually great because then they're getting it consistently. But are there ways that we want to highlight for youngsters, especially in the elementary years, how they can personally become, you know, climate change advocates? Not advocates of climate change, but to help the earth. I think that I've heard from many kids that they, they want to do that, they just don't know how.
Yeah.
And so I'm not sure if that's, you know, again, I'm bringing it back up to a policy level, but how do we influence one of these policies to be 6810, I guess probably, that would add to it that we, we want to encourage the innovation at the, with the teachers to work with their students? Or is there a specific program we want to introduce? Or I don't know what the answer is. I just, that's kind of what brought us to, to ask this question in the first place.
And I might have a, I might have somewhat of an answer for you there. We, one of the things we also did is look to see what are, you know, certainly the issues around environmental sustainability. They're not unique to Tacoma and we're not the first board to have considered how we can sort of use the tools available to us in a positive impact here. Unfortunately, there's nothing like a Wazza model policy on this, where there's a model 6810 where, but we did look at how some other places have done this. And for the most part, it's, the work falls in one of three buckets. Really, what's that educational instructional piece? What's the facilities management piece? How do we partner with community? But there are a few where we've seen a fourth where how can students advocate? And certainly, you know, we're not talking about, you know, teachers having students leave their math class to go and do something, but maybe more provide students opportunities if this is something that's important to you. Here is the kind of place where you can find resources. Here's how you can make your voice heard. Here's how you can, you know, do some leadership on this. So we have seen some places that, that have looked at that fourth element. Very common to see the first three, but there are a few places that have that fourth piece. Encourage and basically direct students to resource where they can really let their voice be heard.
That's, that's, oh, go ahead.
I would just encourage us also to like, be very clear about what does environmental stewardship mean to you folks? Right, when you're thinking about a policy, right? I think we understand the intent sometimes, we all that, the environment is very complex.
It is.
It is vast. And so oftentimes folks will come and say, hey, well, we need this. Okay, if that's what we mean by environmental stewardship, then, you know, are we willing to resource it? Provide time, what is, comes off the plate from the teaching perspective? I think Malik did a great job of reaching out to folks and saying, give us some highlights, right? And I think Director Leon mentioned, because he's seen it in different places, there are teachers that are doing this every day. And they're weaving it in, in there. And so stewardship doesn't come from a check the box. It becomes, as we're constantly learning, technologies change. There's a huge debate right now around, you know, where are all these batteries going to go? And what does that mean? You know, well, everybody's got to get a battery for their electric vehicles. And we can give examples of how we're putting in charging stations, right? In our campuses. Collaborative partnerships, the, everybody having a park within a 10-minute walk. Why? So you're not driving, you're not riding the bus. Transportation and Pierce Transit's role in providing free transportation to reduce cars in there. And so what we have learned is we're actually doing a lot, it may not look at the same place. So as you consider your policy pieces, and I think Malik did a good job of articulating, there may be a gap in the, an explicit one just for instruction.
Yeah.
But then it is woven into other places.
And I think that's, I, I think it's twofold. I think there's the district responsibility and we all, I think, all feel very strongly about that. And we've voiced that in the past and you guys, and we are doing a lot. But I think the second piece is the one, and it came to us and influenced our decision because there's, you know, a couple of programs that, that are only in a couple of schools and it's mostly the ones with the strong P T A who are raising money for them. I just want to make sure that whatever we do, we are thinking how we're going to have this equitably distributed to every school and not just the ones that have an active P T A or an active fundraising arm. I think that it's, this is so important, it's too important for every student not to have an understanding of what the importance is of taking care of our earth. And whatever, obviously as a third grader, you don't have much say or impact individually. But if we're building a knowledge and a commitment to protection, I think that's going to be helpful. So again, it's, I think it's the integration into the curriculum that you were describing, is basically.
Gentlemen, can you do me a favor? Can you go back to the slide that says E S E standards? There we go. Salmon release projects.
Right.
It's something that you see at multiple grade levels having an impact. You have high school kids that are building the plan and releasing. You have elementary kids, you have high school kids that are matching up and teaching. Elementary kids from all over the district that are growing the salmon and releasing.
It's a perfect example. I just want to make sure it's more systemic and more.
Systemic.
It's in 17 elementaries.
Yeah.
And we can expand that, but my push to you is, is as you think about different models in there and saying, so that's one example of environmental stewardship and sustainability with a lot of different lessons. And that, it will never be enough. You have to, you have to weigh that with, how much is dear? In that, in that baseline is saying, thou shalt all do this by policy. See, it's woven into your state standards, it's integrated in that. And I'm not trying to say, don't get us better. Do you, that balance of, shall that be the only project?
Yeah, no, and I'm not, I don't want to get project specific because that's, recycling is actually a perfect example. Because we all thought, you know, absolutely, we've got to recycle. I mean, I am a diligent recycler and I can't, I'm, it depresses me now. All the plastic that I've been recycling all these years that was actually getting sent over to Asia and put in a garbage dump. It's just depressing. So, I mean, I think we want to give kids, we want to be real current with our information and knowledge. And this is a perfect example of how we get kids excited about it and also then teach them that it's not just, it's not just salmon rearing and releasing. It's, that's related how and clean water. And I mean, I, they're learning that because I've been involved in that every year.
You've been releasing salmon.
I've been releasing, I'm in two of them, Josh and Carla.
Pull you back and say, no, this is about the kids.
No, wait, 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 I want to put my two salmon in. But, but I do think that, that, and what I love about this particular program is it is, it's from the, the baby to the, the fish and the whole bit. But it's also about what are the impacts on if the water is bad and where you release them, then the fish die and then, you know, then the, then the orca's impacted. And it's been a fabulous, plus there was all this really cool science that goes on when they're looking at and evaluating the water quality. I just, it's a great project. And it, it's not just science. And I guess I'm just trying to say, you know, it'd be great if, if we integrated in our English language arts with maybe papers on. I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out a way where we put this on as a, as a thematic point of interest. Because our world depends on it. So I'm, I'm feeling a little urgency here.
I appreciate that. And I, I, I think as a policymaker, you're going to want to think about your next steps. Obviously, you don't make decisions in a work study.
Right.
You have some time. We have delivered and hope you see that your goal is delivered. You were very good at saying, look, we've got to get an analysis in here.
Thank you, Malik.
I also want to, I want to thank all of our staff. Because when you see these pictures, you, you're reminded of the deep work that classroom teachers.
Yep, you had to organize that.
Oh, yeah.
Kids' voice, transportation, nutrition services, you have a lot, maintenance and operations. You got all these fish tanks coming in. Right, and so, yeah, it's, it's a Herculean task. It's never enough, but I don't want us to be, I want us to pause enough to also recognize there is a lot of amazing work that is happening. And then definitely a, a special shout out to Malik and the legal team. My digits played a critical role in helping us do some analysis. And so we've given you some information. We look forward to your further action. We obviously have a commitment to keep on getting better every day. There are some things that we, we will have to do no matter what, right? We have to do some policy actions and updates. So we'll get busy on some of that.
No, I appreciate that.
And where our next steps are as well.
And I do think that actually, based on the goals that we actually set this year for ourselves, we actually have had a study session slash retreat on all, each one of them and have actually done actionable items forward. And so I'm pretty pleased and want to congratulate both the board members and also thank you and the staff for, for making sure that we were able to, to meet our goals and to, to learn a lot from it. And so I'm actually excited to see what we can, we can create on this. And I also know we have, all of our specialty high schools really focus a lot in environmental stuff in their, in their learning interactive work. So, you know, I just, I, there's a lot going on, all the high schools are.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, all of them are.
I'm, I'm thinking of the work that killed Silver and Lincoln, right? All of the.
And the one that Tashi and Trevor do at, at.
And that's my point, we could go on and on about the environmental stewardship that people lead in this community. And so we're very fortunate. And we know, we can't quit, but we're not going to solve this alone, right? And so that's why, you know, as Director Leon mentioned, there's, there's, there's such a vast field, right? When you think about urban forestry, policy level trade agreements, where junk's being, you know, floated in and floated out. And so we got to keep the, the idea of our kids constantly keeping aware.
And that was what we'd asked for. So thank you, Malik, to you and your team and everyone else involved to bring this to us today. I really appreciate it. Anybody have any other comments or thoughts? Just this is, we got a, we got a lot, three substantive topics tonight, which lots of things to think about. So thank you for, for pooling this all together, team, Team Tacoma. Well done. Any thoughts or closing comments for tonight?
I would just say, some folks may say, well, what was the third goal, right? The third goal was you were going to engage some parent, our part, community partners in some family listening sessions. And you've been doing those as well. And so kudos to you, folks. You know, you established some goals, you put some action behind those goals.
We got them done.
We're getting them done.
We have one more.
We're not done. We're never done.
Yes.
No, with that particular goal.
Yeah. Next week, next week, we'll, we'll have that one checked.
So in the spirit of that, congratulations, and that is our update for tonight.
Yay, all right. Well, if no one else has anything to add, I am, we are hereby adjourned.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Anything is a go.
Yeah.
How do you spell Mesopotamia?